Okay, it's 5:30, so we have a Sorry. A presentation on the two urban renewal plans, is that correct? Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, Chair members of the Commission, will have the presentation on the Upper East Village Urban Renewal Plan and the airport Airport Development Urban Renewal Plan. You've got to remember all those names. We have a couple staff members with us tonight from the Office of Economic Development. They're going to run us through presentations. These items are also on the agenda, as on consent agenda. So with that, Whitney, if you want to introduce yourself, then go ahead and take it away on this first one.
Yep, absolutely. Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Whitney Bethke. I'm a coordinator with the Office of Economic Development. I'm here today to present our proposed urban renewal plan, the Upper East Village area. The urban renewal plan is a document that kind of provides and encapsulates some of our long-term goals for a specific geographical area. The Iowa code dictates the things that need to be included as part of this plan. We include some additional items, but a map of the area, a legal description, plan objectives, and the relationship to the comp plan will always be included, as well as descriptions of each project, if there are any. The purpose of the plan is to establish a vehicle and a means to pursue some of these priorities, some of those being public improvements, economic stimulation and investment, retain and grow employment, mediating slum and blight, as well as encouraging rehab and revitalization. Without private investment, though, this, the tool doesn't really work, so it's just important to note that that's a requirement, that's the trigger that puts things in motion. With regard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Iowa code lays out clearly the role and what we're doing here tonight. So the Commission is charged with reviewing the conformity with the city's comp plan. So we try really hard as staff to make those connections really clear in the plan, but your recommendation to the Council is what is required by Chapter 403. So this particular area has been named the Upper East Village Urban Renewal Plan. You can see here this boundary, so we're south of 235, north of what is currently sort of deemed or thought of as the East Village, in between East 6th and East 9th, north of Des Moines Street. It's 22 acres, there are 42 parcels. The objectives of this specific plan have to do with some blight conditions, and really like underutilization is something that kind of underscores this whole area. So upgrading the physical environment, encouraging quality construction, expanding housing opportunities, and really diversifying the housing offerings in an area that's so proximate to the job center is something that's really attractive to us as staff. So here we note some of the planned DSM goals that are directly supported by this plan. So there's a couple land use goals related to redevelopment, the expansion of that character of the East Village, which is really just a successful neighborhood that has a great brand for the city. It also helped meet a lot of our housing goals, the proximity, the relationship to the transit route. The diversification of affordability levels is also something we're going to be pursuing with this plan. Transportation goals can be met through some of our strategies for this area. Economic development goals are kept in mind as well. Goal two is, we really view this as a strategic location and pushing the boundaries of the East Village north. Infrastructure and utilities are also addressed. The community character and neighborhoods speaks back to the East Village vibe and encouraging and stimulating that. There's also a social equity component, really wanting to make some of these quality amenities available to everyone. This area specifically here, the zoning, the current zoning is shown. So you'll see the western half is sort of zoned probably appropriately for some of the uses we have in mind. The eastern half is currently zoned P2. And further to the east, I don't know if you can recall, there's some, a lot of like parking lots, things owned by the state of Iowa. So that's where this, the zoning and some of the current, the land use was at one point thought as potential expansion opportunities for the state of Iowa, of course, so this was pre-pandemic. So now the state, along with everyone else, is looking at office spaces going to be retracting, not expanding. So those, the goals and the uses are being thought of by our staff, the state staff, county, and everyone just kind of differently. So you can see that reflected here, but these DX2 and DXR are really in line with the type of interests we're seeing in redevelopment. So here is the future land use map. So you can see this eastern chunk being amended to reflect the development interest we're seeing. So this, some of these parcels, again, are currently owned by the state, but we know they're going through their own planning processes to sort of re-take a look at the capital complex and how that's going to shift and change. We do see the potential in the future for this to expand further to the east because, again, we really see those being great sites for redevelopment as opposed to expansion of state office facilities. This plan does have a proposed project that was, is driving the plan. That is in this site here in the corner of the boundary. So the TIF, the proposed TIF district would be just a single parcel site. This is the former beauty school, so it's a vacant property. The preliminary terms proposed are with Heart of America Development LLC. You can see here some of the details of the project. Seven stories, 186 units would be a large mixed-use project. The park is going to be contained in the site, which is a nice feature. You can see the terms of the deal. The timeline for this plan is shown on your screen. So the City Council has already set the public hearing. The taxing entities consultation meeting was held on Wednesday, or yesterday, yep. And so we were able to visit with the taxing entities and answer any questions they had about the plan. Of course, we are here this evening. On Monday, we meet with the Neighborhood Association. We have had some dialogue with their leadership, but we will formally meet with them on Monday. And then the public hearing is set to be held on March 6th. Also in between here, a point that is not included, that's not a requirement of the state code, but is a part of our processes, we will also preview this plan with the Urban Design Review Board. That will happen next Tuesday morning. So here are some of the current conditions. I know I mentioned underutilization earlier, so that's something we're really taking a hard look at and seeing how to put some of these properties to better use. I am happy now to answer any of the Commission's questions.
I have a question, please. Could you go back to map, map number 10?
Yes, let's see back. One, another one?
Yeah, one more, or this one's okay too, but this one's
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, this one's fine. This is a question I've always had all my life. Where does Pennsylvania begin and East 6th? And I see X6, where does Pennsylvania Avenue begin?
I am very ill-equipped to answer that question. I apologize.
I'm going to look on GIS really quick and see if I can get an answer.
And the other question I had was that, is any other property owner in the proposed urban renewal plan interested in TIF?
We are unaware of that at this point. So that's something we would love to have further conversations about development. And we, that's absolutely the sentiment behind these plans. And when we select these areas, we really carefully research and study, we really contemplated pulling all the way out to the east, but we weren't sure at that point. We actually have had more conversations with the state recently, but we really think about what the market could sustain or what may be, is in a good spot to support development. So we don't preemptively reach out to landowners to ask about their interest in TIF, of course. I mean, we love to hear about projects and engage them in kind of our process from the beginning, but we haven't had any of those conversations yet. I would suspect that the neighborhood meeting would be if there is some, some interest in development that's nearby, that's probably when we would first hear about that.
And answer the other question, I believe, when I look at GIS mapping, Locust Street is the transition from East 7th to Pennsylvania.
Yep.
I think embedded in one of Will's questions, I think, unless I'm misunderstanding, is TIF is a but-for vehicle?
Absolutely.
So in this case, you have one development that's coming forward?
Correct.
And we're saying that, what was the rationale for knowing that this is a but-for development?
Yep. So when, when the project comes into our office and our staff, we have a but-for analysis that we, that we go through. So that
Can you describe it with this one? Like, what was the criteria? What's the algorithm? How'd you know?
Right. So ultimately, the, I mean, we have a lot of conversations, but they are required to submit financials. And so we have a series of financial analyses that we, we pressure test their pro forma against our projections. We look at 10, 20, and 30-year returns. We look at their project gap. We look at industry standards for some of the, you know, to, to an extent, we're both taking some guesses and estimations. So we really make sure all those numbers are within a reasonable, a reasonable range. And then, I mean, our contracts, our development agreements have but-for, really strong but-for language in them. So that's certainly, and I'm sure Mr. Fisher would be willing to speak to that, but that's, that's absolutely an assumption and a requirement for our agreements.
So when you pressure tested this one, what was the bounds of profitability on the project for them?
Well, so those percentages, I mean, those are, those are very detailed questions that probably aren't within, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that, there's, there's numbers and spreadsheets that can
So if they made 50% profit, will it be built for?
Well, no, there's not, right. So they have, right, return percentage, return percentages, debt service ratios, cash flows, those are all, all elements that we would review. And if they are not, yep, okay. Yep, no, if they're not, if they're, if they are out of control or beyond what we would consider a standard, that's when we would, we would adjust any gap or any right-sized incentive that we
I'm just trying to understand, where's the bounds of reasonable? What's the top end of reasonable?
Tom Fisher, Deputy City Attorney. The Council actually makes that decision, and though recommendations and testing is done by the Office of Economic Development, that information is given to the Council, and the Council ultimately has to make that finding. So they're the ones who make those decisions, both about the parameters and about whether any given project would be entitled to TIF.
What's the highest approved level that was deemed reasonable by City Council?
I don't think anyone could answer that. Over the period of years, that's, they make their decision, and it's really exclusively within their purview. So the recommendations are made by staff. Council is aware of the projects as they develop and whether they'll go forward. It's an overall question that they have to answer. Would the project, would the project go forward? Does it need TIF to go forward? And they're the ones in touch with those developers, too. The initial, the initial work is all done by Office of Economic Development, but they can't, they can't answer that question either. I can't answer that question.
So they don't know the bounds of their calculations?
No, I'm just saying, they make the decision. It's not based, it's based on an overall decision. So you can look at one factor if you want, but it's the Council who decides that, so Council members have to make that decision. The information's provided to them that, that economic development puts together. The information is provided to them that the legal department puts together, and then they make that decision.
What's the last TIF project you've seen from the analysis that did not meet the but-for standard?
If it doesn't meet the standard, we don't go forward.
Sorry.
The Council can't go.
So you've never seen a project that hasn't met the but-for standard?
Never seen, you asked about a TIF project. If it's a TIF project, it's met the standard because Council has found that. It's in their findings when they, when they agree to it.
Okay. So have you ever had a project that wanted TIF, but you said, man, this doesn't meet the boundaries?
All the time.
What's the last best one?
Well, that's, that's a different issue, which one. People bring up projects all the time. We consult with Council, we consult with staff. There's lots of projects that don't make that, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to discuss which individual projects came up that, that by staff decision or by consulting with Council, we're not provided with.
Because I know that, sorry, I know that you've got another plan that needs to be presented before our 6 o'clock meeting. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, what I'm getting is that it's not really under the purview of planning and zoning to determine whether something is economically viable, that's up to the City Council, and that what we need to determine is whether or not the zoning is in conformance with the planned DSM. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's correct, as well as the other goal criteria that was mentioned earlier in the presentation. And if there are more questions, we can come back to it under the action items, but we do want to make sure we get through both items in the 5:30 session, just to give us a head start. I don't know if, you know, if anybody else had any last-minute questions on this.
Yeah, I mean, I submitted questions in advance. Did you receive them?
Yes, we did see some of those.
You didn't receive all the questions, I said?
We did. No, I mean, I guess I, we received an email of questions. I
Are you prepared to answer them?
Yeah. Are there ones specific to this plan?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
What percentage of the city land mass-wide is in a TIF district today?
Oh, we do have that. Is it, yep. Sorry, we prepared
I do want to remind the Commission, this isn't an exercise in discussing the policy of TIF, so we're going to keep that in mind throughout these questions. But specific to your question today, a little less than 16% of the city is currently within a TIF district.
Okay. And that would, does it follow that 60% of the taxes collected are in a TIF as well? So for instance, we have things that are, we don't collect taxes on like all this state property, nonprofit, and things like that?
That exempts outright of way, but that it does include all government-owned property as well. So that's the entirety of the city boundary, less the right-of-way in that total.
But it also is possible that a property can be in a TIF district and cannot have TIF being collected. The increment cannot be collected. So there's an ordinance that puts property in a TIF district, and then there's a certification process that collects, that certifies debt against that. So that's not, those aren't a one-for-one. Does that make sense? Property can be in a TIF, so the increment could be there, but the city has to certify it to actually have that revenue be pulled. So you can't assume that that, that percentage of property in, isn't, doesn't correlate directly to revenue.
Okay. And they, and then they don't certify a lot?
Oh, there's a, there is a lot of
So in this urban renewal plan, there's going to be a lot of property that's not going to be certified to have TIF?
Yes. So that's why that just, we just, that little yellow parcel was the only
The, yeah, the one in the corner that
The only piece being
So the financials provided are only for that parcel?
Correct.
Okay. So what is the duration of the plan?
So this plan, because it's designated as blight, is indefinite. It is at the discretion of the Council. It is not limited.
Right. So forever and ever, proper, the increment that would go to DPS, which is being starved of funds by the state, will forever and ever not go to DPS?
Nope, nope. So after this project, after this development agreement has run its course, that increment, and any increment above the percentage in the incentive, is released back to the taxing entities. So the development agreement is not indefinite. This urban renewal area can be indefinite. That's at the discretion of the Council.
And this development agreement is for how long?
20 years is the proposed term.
Okay, I didn't see that in here.
Oh, sorry. Well, yeah, that's
Well, we also have to remember, and I, Carol, I do want them to, I think it's fair to ask educational questions, but we do need to keep in mind that some of the deal, the TIF deal and the details of that aren't before the Commission. The action before the Commission is this urban renewal plan. We've, as a kind of a courtesy to understand what's starting the plan, we've included that information in here, but it's not, that's not what's before the Commission. The Commission isn't being asked to say, do you feel this is a good project, or is the terms of the TIF deal appropriate?
Okay. So I guess I'm confused because the document that's embedded in the agenda is, includes all of this stuff, right, that I'm asking questions on. So that's not really what
You do have to add the project to their
Right. So there are elements that we add in there that aren't, aren't specific to land planning as it relates to the Commission. I mean, this document serves the Council, it serves staff. So yeah, there's certainly a lot of other things. And I'm happy to give you my card. This is
It would have been really great, how about you respond to my questions, I said? Is that possible for you to write the questions, write me answers, or no?
They can follow up with you. In fairness, we gave them the information. They have been reviewing it to try to address what they can tonight, but that doesn't mean that there can't be continued conversation. And also, let's go ahead and switch over to the next part of the 5:30 session, but we can also, we've set this up like we do with any city project. We do a 5:30 session, and then they're on the consent agenda. If they want to be, if you want to pull them off, because there's a couple of questions left, we can still do that, but just as our normal protocol, that's how we've set it up.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? And maybe it's a recommendation for future items like this when they come before us. Could we see an overall map of the urban renewal plans that are adjacent to this and in the city overall, and how this fits into that? And then a series of recommendations from either the Economic Development Office or whoever for how this improves planned DSM and fits into it, for us to then understand and say, yeah, we agree with you. This is something we should agree with.
The report includes the goals out of planned DSM that we believe that the plan is tied to. So
But there's no specific language in there for how this supports that?
No, I think what you're saying is there's no connector between, hey, there's the goals, but how does this one reach those goals and to what level? Is that what you mean?
Right. And is there an urban, is there an urban renewal plan adjacent to this that this should become a larger part of?
So Todd, I don't think I introduced myself before. Ryan Moffett with the Office of Economic Development. We do, in this presentation and certainly in the plan, there are goals listed that the project is supposed to meet to come into conformance with the comp plan. From what I understand, it sounds like what you're asking for maybe is a little bit more specific tie. Instead of just listing the goal, what things could be done to accomplish that goal? Is that a fair way to put that?
How does this, why does this change reinforce the decisions made in planned DSM? You know, I understand the goals of DS, planned DSM, and I understand that you outline those goals, but how does this project, for us to make a decision on, support those goals? By making this change, it improves planned DSM by XXX.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's something we can work on addressing in the future.
And in Urban Design Review, when I was on that board, we were always presented TIF districts in an overall, I'm not, I don't want to get into TIF, but urban renewal districts, there's got to be some adjacent to this. There's one south of this.
There is. This is, this particular one is right across the street, both on the south and the west from Metro Center TIF.
Right.
We have, we had our reasons as to why we didn't expand that basically statutorily. It's, that's kind of our legacy TIF district. It's advised basically that we don't modify the boundaries of that, and that's why we created a new one.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, your first question, the map and the context, I think that's, we're happy to provide that. That's not, not a problem.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and move on to urban, Airport Development Urban Renewal Plan here. This is a map of the overall area, and I will state that this is a fairly big urban renewal plan boundary area. Just a couple of things to point out in here. I know that map's a little bit small. Let me get the presentation view to get that a little bit larger for you. But obviously encompasses the airport grounds, but then it's also got a lot of the development ground that's proximate to the airport, the kind of the master plan and business parks to the south and to the west of the airport, as well as some land that's pretty prime for development off of some of the interchanges of Highway 28 and Highway 65. So kind of the reason why we've got this in front of you tonight is we're, our office is seeing more and more inquiries in this part of town for largely industrial kind of warehouse, business park-type uses, distribution centers, things of that nature. And so we wanted to have basically kind of an enabling plan in place that could allow TIF district to be created in the future if demand warranted, or if we had a project that demonstrated that financial gap that we could address through TIF. So this is basically economic development-related. At this moment, we really, the intent behind this, too, is we're creating this large plan boundary to pick up all these areas, but the actual TIF districts that we envision that would be created someday if a project came forward would be much smaller, basically specific to that project itself. So I want to make that clear that we don't envision a TIF district over the entirety of this, certainly not over the tax-exempt property that, you know, the airport ground sits on. Another reason as to why we landed on the boundary that we did is that the airport had their own development master plan created, and so they've actually got lots that are gate-in, and just outside the airport gate essentially, that they're marketing for other development purposes that want to be proximate to the airport. So to keep the boundaries regular and to take advantage of perhaps an economic development play someday on those sites, that's why we did bring the airport in at this point. So here we can, the acreage is shown, it's about 4,600 acres, 474 parcels, less the right-of-way. This also does pick up property along Fluor Drive, which is more of a commercial redevelopment play as some of these areas get blighted and age out a little bit. The thought would be that maybe we'll have another tool in place besides commercial tax abatement to address some of those, excuse me, those needs in the future as well. So the goals of this plan, basically, first and foremost, economic development. We want to create job-producing entities and try to entice those to the city of Des Moines. That also can increase the tax base, certainly along Fluor I mentioned. The intent would be to remove and remediate light. And then one other component of the plan that I'll touch on a little bit later is what we can do with some of the infrastructure in the area going forward as it develops. So this is a look at the land uses. Obviously, the airport's front and center. It's about 54% of the total area of this plan, but then you can see that kind of light blue shade, that's all the business park land around the airport that we think is prime for development that we're starting to see inquiries on. And then, of course, you get some smaller pockets of lower-density residential and then commercial along Fluor Drive. Zoning map, it's a big plan area, so we've got a lot of zoning districts shown for you there. But obviously, the predominant one is P2 for the airport, and then everything else is largely EX and business park-related. Couple of plan objectives for you. I won't go through all these. I've kind of bolded the first three that we really feel are probably the most important when it comes to evaluating this plan. And then the goals that we found from a land use perspective with comp, with the plan. So we did land use, transportation, economic developments, public infrastructure, utilities. land use, transportation, economic developments, public infrastructure, utilities. So I do want to mention some of the planning work that we've done already in this area that I think this plan, you know, as things get going here, can really reinforce. About a year ago, the city did approve the Southwest Infrastructure Master Plan, so we engaged a consultant team that over about a 15-month span evaluated the infrastructure conditions of this area, predominantly the road network. And this is an area that was kind of one of the newer areas, it was annexed into the city in the late 80s, and so, in many regards, we're still waiting for a lot of the growth to happen in this area, but we wanted to get ahead of the curve in light of the decision that was made with the Southwest Connector to not continue forward, and also to support some of this growth someday with trying to put a more robust road network in place out here. So, this plan broke this area up that you see on the screen here today in the quadrants. Obviously, this urban renewal plan doesn't touch the entirety of that boundary, but it really takes a good chunk of that kind of western part of what you see here today. And then this is just a view showing kind of conceptually what some of the high-level improvements are. I do want to mention that this plan right now doesn't have anything specifically addressed in terms of a project, both private development or infrastructure, so if something did pop up in the future, these plans do routinely get amended, and that would be something that we would add to those plans. So, the caveat is that right now, none of these roadway projects necessarily are identified in this plan, but if we do have increment created here someday, that increment could, if we so choose, go towards helping to build out the infrastructure that you see on this map right now. So as I just mentioned, there's no known projects at this point. We're obviously in conversations all the time with folks about trying to develop along the bypass near the airport. And then, just going through the timeline, we did meet with, there's two neighborhood associations that this touches, we met with them late last year, early this year, and then we just had our taxing entity meeting yesterday, Plan and Zoning Commission tonight, Urban Design Review Board next week, and then March 6th is our council date for hearing this plan. So, with that, I'll take any questions that I can help with?
If I, if I could, we are past our start time for the formal hearing and for starting the meeting and the TV and all that stuff, so what I'd like to do is go ahead and switch over to that, and then we'll go ahead and just have this item, I've asked the commission to go ahead and have this one pulled off, and then you can come back to Ryan and ask him questions, and if you have other questions on the other one, could do the same as well, if that makes sense? Just when, I don't, we'll just pull it off, just like when we ask, you know, if there's anybody in the audience, we just pull it off. We don't, we don't vote on that, we vote to add to the consent, but we don't vote to remove, so. Yep, no worries.
Okay, welcome to the February 16th, 2023 meeting of the City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission. I'm going to read the rules and procedures now. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plats unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the, is it the February 2nd?
Yes.
February 2nd meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Chris? Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. There's four abstentions.
Three abstentions?
Four.
Four?
No, me.
Oh, you.
Yeah. I was gone, I was. Okay, I will now read through the consent agenda items. One, actions pertaining to proposed Upper East Village Urban Renewal Plan, an amendment to Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from public semi-public to downtown mixed use, and determination as to whether the proposed Upper East Village Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with Plan DSM. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this removed from the consent agenda and heard for the public hearing? No? Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this? Okay, we will move item number one to the public hearing. As Jason already mentioned, we're going to move item number two also to the public hearing, that is the determination as to whether the proposed Airport Development Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with Plan DSM. Item number three, a request from 2513 Woodland LLC for designation of the property at 2513 Woodland Avenue as a local landmark. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this removed to the public hearing? Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this in public hearing tonight? Okay, that will stay on the consent. Item number four, request from Fort Des Moines Memorial Park for designation of the property at 75 East Army Post Road as a local landmark named Fort Des Moines Memorial Park. Is there anyone present in the audience who would like this removed to the public hearing? Okay, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this on public hearing tonight? Okay, item number four will stay on consent. Item number five, request from BSDL Incorporated for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, PDS Warehouse Building for property in vicinity of 2220 Sunset Road, and for the following Type 2 design alternatives, A and B, relating to allowing loading doors to face a primary street, and to waive the 15% blank wall limitations. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item tonight? Okay, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? All right, item number five will remain on consent. Item number six, request from Penske Truck Leasing Company for the following regarding the property at 4101 East 14th Street, determination as to whether the request to rezoning is conformance with Plan DSM, amendment to the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification and rezone the property from MX3V Mixed Use District to I-1 Industrial District. Is there anyone here who would like to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? All right, item number six will stay on consent. And item number seven, request from Aurora Avenue Bible Church for review and approval of a major preliminary plat, Aurora Avenue Bible Church Plat 1, for property located at 45 Northwest Aurora Avenue in Sailor Township, which is within the two-mile distance for extraterritorial review of subdivision plats by the city of Des Moines. Is there anyone here who would like to hear this item tonight? Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Seeing none, item seven will remain on consent. So, we are looking for a motion to approve consent items three, four, five, six, and seven.
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Our first item tonight is item number one, actions pertaining to the proposed Upper East Village Urban Renewal Plan, and Shriyoshi will present for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just introduce the item real quick. Item one is the urban renewal plan for Upper East Village area. We just had a detailed presentation, 5:30 presentation, so I'm not going to go into details of the urban renewal plan itself. I'll just remind the commission about the requested actions relating to this particular item. The first is relating to amendment to Plan DSM to revise the future land use for the eastern portion of the, of the urban renewal area from public semi-public to downtown mixed use. And the second requested action is to determine whether the proposed urban renewal plan is in conformance with Plan DSM, comprehensive plan. Again, just quickly go through these, this is the, this is the plan area. The first action relates to the area to the east of Pennsylvania Avenue, if you can follow my cursor, so the amendment from public semi-public to downtown mixed use pertains to this particular area. As staff reviewed this, this particular urban renewal plan, the thing that we looked for was to look at the goals of the urban renewal plan, and to look at Plan DSM goals, and try to kind of find them, find areas where there's the plans of this particular, the goals of this particular plan support or confirm to goals of Plan DSM. So, in your report, in the very last section, page three, you can see that staff has reviewed and found conformance within these particular topic areas, economic development, several goals, land use, transportation, public infrastructure utilities, community character in neighborhoods, as well as social equity. So, staff believes that the proposed urban renewal plan is in conformance with Plan DSM, and in order for it to be in conformance, the future land use designation for the eastern portion of the area needs to be amended from semi-public, public to downtown mixed use. Staff also believes that the goals within the urban renewal plan align with several of the goals that are listed below from Plan DSM. So with that rationale in mind, staff is recommending approval of the request to amend Plan DSM for a portion of the area from public semi-public to downtown mixed use. Staff is also recommending that the commission find that the proposed urban renewal plan is in conformance with Plan DSM. So, that is my quick presentation, and with that, I will just hand it over for any questions on the plan. Thank you.
Commission, questions?
I have a question. On page two, bullet five, it says that we advocate a coordinated strategy that enhances all of these options over time, this talks about transportation, rather than favoring some at the expense of others, which to me seems to go exactly against promoting walkability and bicycling. So, I think that really needs to come from the economic development folks on why we would say that and how that's in.
Yeah, I mean, of course, those sustainability goals are really important, but we know in Iowa and in Des Moines right now, vehicular traffic is just a reality, so we have to plan for that. Several of our zoning districts require parking, so we still have to really thoughtfully consider how these sites and projects, housing projects particularly, can, can work well with all of those modes of transportation.
I think this was talking more about transportation, not.
Right, with all those modes of transportation.
Okay. I'm disappointed that we would say that we would hold them all equal, rather than favoring some at the expense of others, especially when you mentioned several times in the document that you want to promote walkability and bicycling. I think that, that's a little bit of a dissonance, and, and it's in that area with the density, and I think the vibe that you're going for, I would think that you would want to have driving as a lower mode of transportation than walking and biking. So, I'm just disappointed that the city would sort of say they're equal.
Yep.
Especially in this neighborhood.
That's noted. We're charged with also really though considering the market and what the demand and requirement is, so that's, can certainly note your concern and take that into consideration as we develop our future plans.
And if the commission, you know, in your motion wants to make a recommendation on that kind of language, I think that's certainly in the commission's purview to make that as part of your motion.
Because I think those were some of the goals that were listed, was promoting the walking and bikeability.
Absolutely.
Does the seven-story building have to consider a capital view shed?
Yes. Yep, all regular city processes and requirements will be, will apply to this project, so it will undergo the regular site plan process, they'll work with our Permit Development Center team, so the, the capital view shed analysis and those requirements will certainly be in effect.
Okay.
It's very likely that this particular project will come before the commission for design alternatives of some sort.
Yep.
Right. I'd hate to lose that great view of the capital from there.
Yeah, we, our IT staff and Ryan has worked really closely with them to develop some really advanced modeling capabilities, so that's really cool, and perhaps the commission might have a chance to see some of those, I'm not sure how that might work.
I'm glad that that's, I didn't know how far out the requirements went for a view shed, so thank you for considering that.
Yep.
Can you also, I'm sorry, can you also tell us what the height limit is in this district? Because a lot of the area, at least directly around that lot, and I realize we're not talking specifically about this project, but seven stories is quite higher than most of the development that's.
Yeah, so 75 feet is the requirement. This building potentially would eclipse that on the, at a couple points, but again, that will be subject to the waiver process. There is also the Lyon multi-residential building, which is also kind of large in scale, and that is kind of interesting how those all are in proximity to the capital, but.
Right.
Absolutely.
Is that the one that's sort of downhill, though?
It's to the west.
To the west, but kind of downhill, so it, it is quite, it is quite large.
It's on the top of hill.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yeah, those are certainly things Jason, teams and the planning staff all work really closely with those considerations.
I have a question too about waivers. You can correct me if I'm wrong, I've read someplace that the plan is to have 150 parking stalls within the building enclosed.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that a item that could be waived later on?
No, that, well, the, this zoning district does not have a parking requirement, so they're not dealing with the code issue here. Again, they're assessing the market and what they feel like is required to make their product serviceable in this area. So, there are no parking requirements for this project.
And that's the reason I asked the question, and I'd like the developer to know that the commission, at least from my point of view, is concerned about parking in densely populated areas, and we have read 150 parking stalls are proposed in the new construction, and I think that's an important component of compliance, in my opinion.
Yes, and I, I can tell you, I think that the developers certainly views that as an amenity for their residents. Thank you.
How will you evaluate, and is there anywhere that you think a standard is present, you know, quantitative standard is present in this urban renewal plan, whether your TIF projects approved within this plan are meeting your stated equity test? How are you testing equity?
Well, we have an equity toolkit and a number of staff on our team that are, really help us evaluate those things. As the, the projects are all different, as our attorney just suggested, so that is less, I mean, important to how this plan relates to Plan DSM, but we, we take a lot of pride in using our equity toolkit, and this project in particular will provide some different levels of housing, the proximity to work centers is something we really like, the amenities that will be provided, the housing mix is something that, kind of off the top of my head, sticks out in terms of social equity, but that's of course a hard thing to quantitatively describe and report to something like the PNC Council or Commission.
Well, I mean, for example, the director's report that came out a few years ago, that was commissioned by Greer Des Moines Partnership. was commissioned by Greer Des Moines Partnership, or, I'm sorry, not commissioned by, but worked in partnership with them, and there was some funding coming through, did come up with solid metrics for how we can show how inequitable we are in certain areas. Has anything like that been taken into account when you're looking at projects like this?
That is not a separate criteria for urban renewal plans.
Okay. So, you stated equity is a target, but we don't have a way to evaluate whether or not we have a target embedded within this plan?
We do not quantitatively evaluate or report social equity, no.
Okay. So, we won't know if we've hit it?
No, we, we won't. I won't be able to show you a flash of number that tells you that we hit it. I mean, if you're asking for quantitative data, that, it's something we are constantly working to improve, but it's, again, it's difficult to report in figures.
So, you know it when you see it, like other stuff, right?
No, and, I mean, in economic development, there's a number of, right, things that we are constantly working on and trying to make better, you know, placemaking, livability, quality of place. Those are all things that are difficult to attach a number to that we are charged with improving for our community. I don't, I think there's certainly always opportunity to provide better measurables or, and if the commission has recommendations on that, I think we would always be willing to hear that. We would love to see our work be able to report it that way. Unfortunately, providing homes for people, providing affordable housing, those are, the most powerful pieces of that are not numbers, unfortunately.
Well, okay. So, the reason, there is an example, though. Like, for example, the director's council said there is a 14.7% unemployment rate in the north side when we have a 3.5% across the county unless within the city. That seems to be a pretty good measure of inequity. When you look at the percentage of homeownership in that area, we have a sub 2.5% relative to normal. So, I mean, I think those are measures of inequitable. So, it seems like the counter could be possible. So, I guess I'm having troubles hearing that part. But if we don't have, we don't have it. The other pieces I'm asking on is, within, you know, Plan DSM, so we've got three questions, I'll be quick with them because I've always asked them, is, you know, if the goal of Plan DSM, which is paraphrasing, is to, you know, sustainably economically invest in our city, my questions there are, first, has any return on investment yet been done on any TIF project that's at least 10 years old? Are we able to say, we put this money in, we got it back out, this was actually meaningful?
Yeah, I mean, those, we perform that, and we have those calculations on a number of projects.
Oh. When did we get those?
From a, well, I...
I've been told we don't have any of those.
We have those from a tax perspective. I mean, tax receipts and rebates are, are public information. That information is readily available. Taxes that developers pay, rebates that are provided back to them.
Oh, sorry, got you.
What we can't quantify, obviously, is, is spinoff development and economic impact and dollars that residents now spend downtown. We, we know that those impacts are significant, and we see that development, the synergy. So, that, when we talk about information that we can't provide, that's really the most powerful information that is always going to evade us. That's extremely difficult to quantify, impossible. But tax, certainly, tax, right. It's impossible to know in 186-unit apartment how much money those residents now will spend downtown supporting businesses. That's what, when we, when we look at developing and tax-based, there's just another world of benefit that we're bringing to the community.
So, Professor Sorenson from Iowa State University, who has done these studies and has actually shown that actual impact, you're saying that work is not accurate or factual?
No, I'm saying that you can't, you can't tell to the dollar what a specific project might bring to an area. But again, the, the tax story and the tax returns are very powerful. So, that, that information we have.
Okay. What other economic tools were considered or support, you know, for supporting the currently expected TIF project, you know, the related project? And why was TIF for that project, which appears to be the instigator of this urban renewal plan, considered more suitable than any other of those options? What other options were we considering?
Is there a specific option you are wondering about?
No, I'm just curious, the thought process. Like, we usually jump to TIF quickly, which instigates need for urban renewal plan.
Yeah, because over, over the course of the past few decades, the city's tools for economic development have been largely stripped away. So, TIF is really the most impactful tool that we have. We, of course, always encourage our developers to layer in other federal, county, other resources, but we have very few...
What other city incentive did you consider for this project besides TIF?
We wouldn't have another appropriate city incentive.
There's nothing else we can do to support the gap that this group needs to actually develop?
So, urban revitalization, of course, is a by right tool that everyone has access to in the city and for certain projects. So, urban revitalization and urban renewal are the two tools that we use the most to stimulate development.
So, nothing was accessible except TIF, which is why we need the urban renewal plan?
That's correct.
All right, sweet. This is an area that's very accessible to commuter-friendly commercial development. Is there anything you're doing, I mean, you're right off the interstate exit, as you saw, I mean, we now know where Pennsylvania starts and ends, right? That's a good way to get on, and six is a good way to get off.
Yeah.
Is there anything you're doing in this plan to ensure that the inequities constantly seen in commuter-intensive TIF districts, i.e., people come in, they don't actually pay a whole lot of other taxes, they use the stuff, we've subsidized them being here, but they don't pay for our schools? Is there anything that we've seen in other cities that we've seen all across the country that happens that you're going to be doing in this plan that's different to ensure that that inequity does not actually continue? Douglas Corridor, not very worried about it, right? That's a hard place to get to for a commuter. This one, I could see hopping on from Altoona or Waukees and go in a nice office building there or something. That seems like it makes a lot of sense. But I don't want to pay for Waukees schools and Altoona schools with this.
Right.
And you're telling me there's no other way to prove return on investment? We're just sure it's going to actually work? Yet, the data shows if I have commuter-intensive, you know, commuter-accessible TIF districts, those will typically not be returning investment.
Well, it's also the job of myself and my colleagues to make Des Moines a fantastic place, not just to live. So, we will work really hard on those other things. Having a lot of conversation about pivoting downtown, and we, placemaking is, is very important to that. Contractually requiring different things, and I know I've, I've heard some of this line of conversation in other P&amp;Z meetings, is, is not, not something we have an appetite for. We certainly want this to be a place where people come and live and work and spend their dollars, and we try very hard to make that be the case, but...
So, we want to give them money, but we don't want to require them to come back with anything we're expecting? Is that what you're saying?
We're in a intertwined metro area that suburb city, I mean, some of this is seamless, right? I mean, the economy is seamless here, basically. And I think that we would put ourselves at a pretty big competitive disadvantage sometimes when some of our projects are in competition, or in competition with other communities by putting things like this into place. And so, right now, we don't have a policy that would direct us to do those kind of things as a part of our TIF analysis, our urban renewal plan boundary analysis, any of that kind of thing. That's not something that council or the city managers directed staff to look at.
Do you think it would be useful?
I think, quite honestly, what you're suggesting, I can't recommend that I would advocate that we do that, because I think that puts us at an unlevel playing field when we've already got things to overcome, like a higher property tax rate with other communities.
How do you consider Kansas City, which has done that, succeeding?
Again, we're, we're not going to be able to engage in this debate tonight about this kind of thing. I mean, this is something that council drives the TIF policy. If the city manager directs staff to look at this, or if council directs the city manager to, we'll do it. But it's not something that we're going to recommend that we look at further.
Interesting.
Madam Chair, I wonder if other commissioners might have questions?
Yes. Do any other commissioners have questions for Whitney?
I, I have a, a conflict about how to make a decision about this, because the urban
renewal plan is tied to a project. And the struggle I have is, is between what Will mentioned and what Carol brought up, is that I don't know and I don't need to know the financial gap and where it is in this project, because I shouldn't know about the project. We're only tasked with the urban renewal plan. But if we're incentivizing 150 parking spaces at the lowest end, $20,000 a space, that's $3 million. If those parking spaces cost $30,000 a space, that's $4.5 million in this project, where we're supposed to be encouraging all transit modes, walkability, bikes, DART, whatever the transit modes come up in the future. But I have a feeling part of the gap is covering the cost of the parking associated with this project. Right or wrong, that is a struggle for me to say this is the right way to approve an urban renewal plan, when I kind of know that there's a project that's, I feel like we're incentivizing one mode of transportation over another when it may be creating the If the parking weren't there, would there be a gap? Would that force the developer to say, we need the, people that live here to park further away, use transit, use city parking ramps? That's, I don't know how to make a decision on this. Right now, I can't, I can't say I would vote to support this as an urban renewal plan fitting into with DSM, Plan DSM, for that simple reason. And it's because we learned about the project. And I don't know if that was, everything we're talking about right now is about the project, not the urban renewal plan. And because of the financing of the project tied to TIF and knowing what parking costs, does it fit into Plan DSM?
In DX2, is parking, parking's not allowed, right? That is parking, you have to get to type two.
Surface parking is not allowed. Surface parking is not allowed. So, this type of parking is allowed and supported by the code.
Just wanted to add one point in our conversation with the developer on this project. They did approach the state of Iowa about utilizing the ramp that's there to not have to put parking into this project, but unfortunately, those conversations didn't really bear any fruit. And so, from a market perspective and a financing perspective, they still felt that they needed to have a parking solution in-house. But I did want to mention that they did try another solution and just couldn't, couldn't come to an agreement.
But you can understand where my struggle is in trying to see how this, in the future, when hopefully we're not so reliant on vehicles, we've incentivized a project for 20 years to create an urban renewal plan that supposedly, by all other metrics, fits into Plan DSM. You know, that's how I struggle with it. And I'm sure this is not the last time we're going to see this project. I can guarantee you that. So, we'll have plenty of time to discuss that. But that's my struggle. So, that's for what it's worth.
And that, I mean, I, that brings me to the, the thought that, you know, we're asking you to vote and make a recommendation. We're not telling you what your vote or your recommendation needs to be. We just, it's just part of the process. You have the right to make a, you know, somebody make a motion and vote however you want, but it does need to keep moving forward.
No. Well, this isn't, I mean, we're not have final say on this, right? I mean, to me, this looks like this does not quantity, oh, I'm sorry, we're not discussing.
Do any other commissioners have questions?
Okay. I'm going to go really fast. Yeah. I think you mentioned grocery and healthy food options in your presentation.
Yes.
Are you anticipating that the mixed use of this building will satisfy that?
We, we don't know exactly what the mixed use will be, but we would, of course, that would be great, but also the, the location proximate to the East Village, as well as the rest of the core, would make healthy options available, more so certainly than other parts of the city.
Okay. Because I'm, that's kind of part of the equity message, I think, you were proposing, right, that there will be more healthy food options.
Well, right. And this is just a great housing location that would provide anyone some great options.
Okay. And then, just to do the math really quick, I know we're not supposed to look at the math, but it appears to me that we're going to give them 4.5 million on date, on year zero.
No. The 4.5 is over 20 years. They get nothing on day zero.
Okay. So, over 20 years, they get half a million a year or something like that, right? Nope?
Yeah, I guess I...
Okay. And then, they don't pay taxes, though, for 20 years?
No, they will, they will most certainly pay taxes. So, they have indicated that they will apply for the tax abatement, which is a 10-year sliding scale. So, they will always be paying taxes on the property, and they will always pay taxes on, during that initial 10-year abatement value that exceeds the initial abatement. So, the initial value of their improvement is what they will get abatement credit for. So, after that wanes, in year nine and 10, that starts to come down. That's when the TIF incentive that you're seeing here will, will kick into place. But you'll notice it's not 100%. So, those, they will be paying taxes the entire time. Some of it will return to them in form of a rebate, minus the protected levies, which will be like $8 per thousand, will be given to all the taxing entities, helping with the, our debt obligations and things like that.
Are you going to have to bond for it because I...
No, absolutely not.
Okay, that's good, because bonding, I, I heard Nick Schall during work sessions say that bonding is very expensive these days, and you're looking to get out of that. So, that was one...
Certainly. And we, yeah, we, as a matter of practice, avoid that when all possible. And we really don't do deals like that.
Thank you, because I, it wasn't exactly clear to me in that.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, no bonding. This is purely rebate. They pay their taxes. They are given a portion of them back.
And that Des Moines Surgery Center, which is vacant and everything, what...
Yeah, we, we don't know. I mean, I wish I had better information or leads on that.
Okay. I have one final question.
Yeah.
Are you going to tear down those single-family homes? And what about those residents that live there?
Oh, so, no, we, we would certainly never advocate for that or, or, or propose that at all. We, we, there's a great housing mix in the area, but there are some underutilized spaces in and around some of those houses. So, this is not meant at all to drive any residents away or make any assumptions or projections as such.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have questions for Whitney? Okay. Seeing none, unless, I think everybody else here is with the city, right? So, we don't have any citizens in attendance, so I can skip the speakers in support, speakers in opposition, and close the public hearing, and I suppose ask for a motion or if there's any further discussion?
I don't think there's anything here that indicates we've shown that this quantitatively meets the standards of Plan DSM. Therefore, I move that we move staff, less item B. Sweden. Requested action, we move A and agree with A, but reject B.
Some motion? All who...
So, could you repeat the motion, too, that we're clear about it? And maybe sometimes we vote individually on A and then on B. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that, absolutely. I think if, if there's a sense that the vote might not be the same, I think that's a great observation, Will, and I appreciate that. So, I, this is, might be one of those times that it's appropriate to vote on A separately from B. And the motion I have is that Chris is moving the staff recommendation on part A, and then on part B is the recommendation from, from the commission is that the urban renewal plan does not conform with Plan DSM.
Correct. That's my motion.
Okay. So, we will first vote on A. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
So, this would just be to amend the land use plan from public semi-public to downtown mixed use? Motion carries.
And the second part is to deny that the proposed Upper East Village urban renewal plan is in conformance with Plan DSM. All in agreement to that, raise your right hand.
All right. The motion fails.
Madam Chair, can we vote on B again as a staff recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, the counter, counter motion can be made, the positive, the affirmation.
I'll move, then, to accept the recommendation of staff for item B.
Do we want to add language about transportation? Where were we going with that?
Well, I, I think, if you, going back to Carol's comment, it was that you would be recommending that modes other than vehicular be, I'm trying to...
Prioritize.
Yes, thank you.
I think that'd be great.
Sounds good.
How would that function? How would that functionally work? Would we require that the plan must be amended before it's approved? I mean, if you're saying we need to include transportation language, how does that work? We say that here, what hap...
I think we are. I think that would be the recommendation to...
I have the ability to make that amendment and provide it to the taxing entities prior to the public hearing.
So, who reviews that it was done correctly? I don't understand, like, what are we saying?
Well, it would then incorporate that into the conversation of a TIF project coming before us.
And again, like, any condition that the commission recommends or the council ultimately applies to something, it's up to staff to evaluate whether what's been done complies with the intent of the language in the roll call.
But we've heard that they've seen plenty of these line of questioning, but we haven't done any evaluation before. How do we know this is going to get evaluated?
But again, the answer to the question is, who looks at and decides? It'll be staff. Is our job to administratively implement whatever the action is from council?
The language right now says to keep all modes of transportation equal, and I think it's a wise recommendation to say that we actually prioritize other modes of transportation over cars, so that it is part of the dialogue going forward.
Could we come up with some language that would incorporate what you have suggested, Dan?
Mm-hmm.
I think she said she could incorporate it, so if we say something like prioritize other forms of transportation other than motor vehicles, you can make that happen.
That's fair, I think that's clear.
Okay, so, I'd suggest we add that to your motion, if Dan's okay with that language.
I agree with it.
You should just make that as a recommendation to council.
Yes, that's...
That's the factor. It's a recommendation, you're entitled to make recommendations to council, so you should.
Are you adding that Dan is a friendly...
So, we don't need to add it? We don't need to add it, then, which is separate?
Well, no, no. Will made the motion, he needs to accept the friendly amendment from Dan, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, friendly amendment to add that the language about regarding transportation in the plan be revised to prioritize other modes of transportation other than passenger vehicles?
And do you accept...
Or motor vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, do I need to say that again?
No, I think we're good.
I think everybody's got it. Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number two, determination as to whether the proposed airport development urban renewal plan is in conformance with Plan DSM. And Sri Oshie will present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sri Oshie Chakravarti Planning Staff. The second item is also a proposed urban renewal plan for your consideration. This is the Airport Development Urban Renewal Plan, and it basically includes a large area around the Des Moines International Airport. There was also a detailed presentation on this particular item, so I'll keep it brief. And the requested action for this is to determine whether the plan, urban renewal plan, is in conformance with Plan DSM, comprehensive plan. And again, just to refresh young memory, this is the airport, and this is a fairly large area encompassing around the airport. I'm just going to quickly move over to a couple other maps in the plan. This is the future land use map, and again, Ryan went through all of these, so I'm not going to go into any detail, but it kind of shows the variety of land uses in the area. Same thing with the zoning, there's a few different zoning districts that are there, but in terms of uses, it's predominantly some commercial, light industrial, as well as residential. The primary goal for this urban renewal plan is to allow or spur development, as well as redevelopment in the area, with an intent to create and retain jobs and increase the tax base, as well as improve investment in that particular area. So, again, with this plan, staff reviewed the goals within the urban renewal plan and tried to develop some connection and see which Plan DSM goals are supported by the urban renewal plan goals. And as you can see, there are a few different goals that do align. Under land use, we have goal one, goal seven, oops, economic development, public infrastructure, and utilities, as well as transportation. So, I'm not going to read through these, but staff reviewed that and thinks that the urban renewal plan does conform to Plan DSM, and therefore recommends that the commission find that the proposed urban renewal plan is in conformance to Plan DSM. So, that's the end of my presentation, and if you have any questions, we'll take them at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know that we got to questions for Ryan, I think there might have been some, so if Ryan wants to come up.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Ryan?
Sorry, I'm the frequent flyer here, also known as a PETA.
Is that a...that's a pun, because this is the airport.
Yeah, yeah. On page 11, letter D, responsibility of developer. It says, "Developers shall work with the city to coordinate realization of the intent and purpose of this plan. This will include limiting tax abatement for exemption from taxes to the value added by the improvements." Can you unpack that for me and help me understand what you mean by that?
Sure. Anytime we negotiate a deal, an economic development agreement that we utilize TIF, I mean, our whole game plan is to use as little as possible to get the project off the ground. And so, one thing that we've done before is, right now, we offer two commercial tax abatement schedules.
Right.
There's a three-year 100% schedule and a 10-year declining. If we might have a project that has gap financing needs where TIF would come into play, we might restrict them down to lesser, the shorter abatement schedule instead of the longer.
Okay, or maybe not any abatement.
Or maybe not any abatement, you're correct.
You're right, okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I just maybe have a suggestion. We did a TIF, like, training last year, and maybe Carol and a few other people might, maybe Katie, I don't remember who was here. Maybe we could just share it with everyone, again, and via email, so that everyone has access to look up some answers to questions.
It's a good idea. Well, we can send that out.
Can we also add the performance metrics that they indicated earlier that they now have? Because those weren't available at that training. There was no performance metrics, no indication what actual return on investment occurred. We get these nice charts that say, "Hey, it's going to do this, then this." There's been no actual presentation...
You talking about the tax return...
I'm talking about the actual economic sustainability and effectiveness of this as a tool. And we've seen the chart, it was even in one of your reserve slides, it was going to be shown but skipped over again, but we've never seen the actual real data relative to those slides. We're told we don't have it.
So, the reason why on this particular plan the financial condition report's not included is because there is no TIF district that's established today?
Sorry, not about the airport, not worried about this, not concerned about that. I was told that a training was had. In that training, no data was given on performance or quality of the use of this tool. I'm saying, in your presentation, it was for the East Village one, we had that standard chart, which says, "Hey, it's going to do this, and it's going to do one of these, and we're going to all be rich in the end." But there's never been any data that shows that the line is anything relative to what it says, and there's a whole body of evidence, starting from California in '52 when they created this stuff, that shows it does not conform to that line. That's what I'm saying. When we send out the materials, can we please also send out any evidence that this ever works?
So, our finance department does keep that data, just in terms of property tax assessments...
Just throw it in the packet.
Yeah. I just want to point out again, too, and I don't want to sound like a broken record with this, but when we're looking at, is the urban renewal plan in conformance with the comp plan? That's really what this commission is set to do. We're not here to really discuss the merits of tax increment finance. I mean, people might have strong opinions about that, but that's just not what we're here to do tonight.
Correction, because embedded within whether or not it's in conformance is that it has to be in conformance and say that we are going to be sustainably economically investing in our city. That's in the plan. So, we can't say, "Hey, yeah, we like all these other pieces," but we're going to throw away one of the big ones, can we?
I mean, the challenge of what we're doing tonight, though, is we're creating a new one, right? And I think what...the data that we would have would be on one that's been in existence for some time, where we can go back and say, "Here's how this performed over time." If we do that on a presentation like this, I mean, it would be guesswork.
So, if my kids break the window 10 times and I don't change anything, should I expect the window to get broken?
I disagree with that assessment, that you're basically saying that TIF doesn't work as an economic development tool, and I would say that it does.
Sweet, give us the data in the packet, which is what, you know, Emily asked for the packet, let's get the packet, and let's add the data that we said that we didn't have before and we said we have now.
I'll let you have the last word on it, but we're happy to provide that TIF packet for the commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for the suggestion, Emily. Again, seeing that there is no public here, I will close the public hearing and ask for a commission discussion or motion.
I'll move staff.
Motion to move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Oh, all against, all opposed, and abstain?
I'm going to bring it up again. I don't think you can comment on and then abstain. Am I wrong?
I thought you voted against it, or did you pass?
I vote abstain. Is there a rule that we are not allowed to say anything, then we actually legally have the right to vote?
No, I think...I don't know that there's a rule, but I know that we're having some discussions internally that maybe we should use the term "pass" and record it a little differently, because abstain can give the impression that you have a conflict, and so, just for...we haven't...we weren't ready to share that with the commission yet, but since it's been brought up, I think moving forward, we'll just use the term "pass," which is...
Sweet, all right, pass.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, consideration of city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendments to the municipal code sections pertaining to outdoor storage.
Chair, members of the commission, I just wanted to briefly touch on this. Easily could have been a consent item, but I do like to provide a little summary on these types of things. This is a cleanup in our minds. Right now, their outdoor storage is handled in both chapters 134 and 135. We believe that should all be handled in 135 holistically, and the value of that is, if there's a need to offer relief, we're only dealing with it here at the Planning Zoning Commission. We're not sending somebody to the zoning board adjustment and a P&amp;Z. So, that's the intent of this amendment. So, if you have questions, let me know, but I just wanted to provide a very high-level summary.
I have one out of curiosity. Is there anything in here that's influenced by the, what was it, the outdoor sheds for hoop houses and those things, or is this completely separate?
This is completely separate. Actually, the project that made us realize that there was an issue here is actually transload, and they'll probably be coming before the commission at some point to seek some...a waiver.
Okay, any questions or discussion from the commission or a motion?
I'd move staff. I'm sorry, unless there's questions.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Are there any directors' reports?
Nope.
Okay, I will close the public hearing then. Thank you.